Well, we kind of already decided. Can you say, um, in the sake of time, if everyone has the same view, please stand up if you'd be interested in waiting to speak? I have to leave early. I got both these funders, all right? There's a lot of people who find out stuff.
So that's your land.
Oh, I thought this is you had your plane.
That's this afternoon. I got these funders right at my, at noon. Ooh, I hope that didn't.
It's here. Fitzpatrick.
So I think we're.
Okay, I don't have a plan. Oh, you need me to stop some?
Good morning.
Where's the sign?
I would like to call to order Pasco County Board of County Commission 10:00 AM meeting of September 28th, 2021. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge. Madam Clerk?
Oh, merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
While the citizens of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
District two, Commissioner Moore. District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Here.
Uh, now's the time for public comments. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any item coming before the board and on items to be placed on future board agenda or other business under their review. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who have registered on WebEx, Link, and are currently on Q. This format does not waive your request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. For WebEx and in-person participations, after starting, stating your name and address for the clerk, the timer will start. A countdown, after two minutes, a beep will sound, letting you know you have one minute to finish after your time is up. Two beeps will sound, indicating that three minutes have passed and you should end your comments. WebEx participants will be automatically cut off. The following have signed up to speak this morning. Madam Clerk?
Um, I do have about twenty-one individuals who signed up, so what I will do is I'll call three at a time, and if you, if you're able to, to just line up behind the person at the podium. So the first three, I have John Russell, followed by Jean, is it Sofeli? Okay, and the third one would be Cindy Fargo. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Russell, name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Russell. I live at ninety-six fifty-two Cavendish Court in Newport Ritchie, District four. I attended the meeting, uh, in Dade City, and I learned some interesting things, that there's a difference between east and west. Now we are on the west side, so that's good. I also learned from, uh, our county attorney here that the MSBU on the Oaks Park is a thing. It's a, was passed, it's done, but it's never been implemented. So there was a discussion as to why it wasn't implemented. Commissioner Mariano was the only one that responded, and he said, "I don't know." "I don't know why." So it is what it is, and the motion was passed that they, moving this MSBU to the property appraiser would be at this meeting. So that was moved and passed, and that's, what we have is R sixty-eight, I think, is what it is on here. All right, so that was what happened at that meeting. Now there seems to be a little bit of confusion going on about how this is going to be implemented. Somebody had said to me that this is going to be backcharged to 2014, and everybody's going to have to pay one-third or a million dollars upfront. I don't think that's true, because you said at that other meeting, it, it will go on to 2023 is the earliest the property appraiser can get it on there. So that's my understanding of it. Okay, now, I'll keep it pretty short. I got two last things here. One, I've been in public office, I've served two terms on the school board, I know what it's like to serve. But we got it, we always try to remember that we serve the people, the community that we represent, and we don't serve ourselves. And I don't see anybody serving theirself there at all, but I'm, just want to say that in general. Uh, the last thing I have, I sent all of you emails with four questions on it, and I got one response that just acknowledged that I had, that they had received my email. But I don't get any answers, I don't get anything. So I assume you have your emails on the web for a purpose, and in the future, I would hope that we can get some answers. I don't have time to read those questions to you, but I know you all have them in your emails. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Jean Sofeli. I live at five oh three oh Gallatin Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, and that's in the Southern Oaks subdivision. I ask the Board of County Commissioners to postpone their vote on the Oaks Park MSBU until we are all notified in writing of the ramifications and costs to each homeowner and to the possibility of other options to consider. Southern Oaks homeowners are not aware of the pending vote by the BCC, and they have never been notified by the county or our homeowners association. We never met with our District four county commissioner as our two meetings scheduled with her by a group of several homeowners association board members and concerned homeowners were postponed and then canceled. Many seniors have been sequestered at home for two years because of COVID. They have no idea that a vote is being taken today. The assumption that everyone is aware of this vote is false. Secondly, I want to ask the Board of County Commissioners exactly what essential services they are providing to Southern Oaks property owners. We pay a homeowners association fee of three hundred dollars a year to provide for the maintenance of over fifty acres of conservation areas, stormwater retention ponds, and landscaping services to these areas. As Southern Oaks is over thirty years old, we will undoubtedly be assessed for paving improvements in the near future. This would be a truly essential service. The MSBU being considered on top of this would be an unnecessary additional burden to all of us. Our community abuts Starkey Park. We need only cross it in the new traffic light, giving us access to miles of biking and walking trails as well as eight thousand acres of Starkey Wilderness Park. In two thousand and twelve, Southern Oaks, Southern Oaks property owners entered the movement against overdevelopment of forty-one landlocked acres in Riverside Village because we feared they would be open up the Amazon stub and allow heavy traffic from the proposed two-hundred-and-fourty-unit, high-density rental development to flow through our residential streets. In other commu-, if other communities require essential services, they should be allowed to petition at B S, BCC for a new MSBU to cover these community-specific essential services. Let's take the opportunity to have a fair and equitable solution to this issue rather than a rushed and flawed fix. We do not wish to develop an adversarial relationship with our BCC, our neighborhood communities. We only want to determine the facts and offer that. Hopefully, we'll be able to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to present for the record.
Second.
Got a motion to receive and file.
You can bring it over here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
So after Ms. Fargo, I have the next three is Madeline, uh, is it Capollano? And Conchetta San Filippo? And Diane Coburnick. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Fargo. I reside in Southern Oaks, five oh three oh Gallatin Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida. I respectfully ask the Board to delay any actions relating to the Oaks Park MSBU pending county written notification to all sixteen-hundred-plus targeted property owners. This special assessment has been dormant for seven years. According to data provided by the Pasco County Property Appraisers Office, over seventy percent of MSBU-targeted properties have transferred ownership since 2014. How many of these new property owners are made aware of this pending special assessment? I would venture none. How can this Board justify taking further action without proper notifications to all affected targeted property owners? It appears only selected HOAs were in discussions with some commissioners regarding resurrection and activation of the MSBU. As was the case in 2014, Southern Oaks property owners were once again left out of any such meetings and discussions. Based on recent fact-finding phone calls to commissioners and other county officials, we understand the county wishes to recover the three million they expended from the general funds to purchase the Oaks property in 2014. Two options were verbally set forth. One, initiate the MSBU, or two, the county can sell the property in these favorable market conditions with deed restrictions placed on the property to adequately address the compatibility concerns of the surrounding existing communities. I was also told by a commissioner, county administration was drafting a letter to all HOA boards outlining these options. All targeted property owners deserve to have proper notice with details of the options available to them. It is concerning the same commissioner suggested a vote by HOA board members from each of the communities wrapped under this MSBU would determine the county's actions on options available. This suggestive voting procedure would be beyond the authority of HOA board members to act on issues resulting in special assessments to individual property owners beyond their HOA assessments. There was a backroom deal in 2014. We don't need another backroom deal today. All targeted property owners also need to be made aware of the long-term financial burdens that would be assessed under the establishment of this MSBU. It is not a one-time special assessment. The current Board can move forward on this issue with more flexibility as they now own the property. They can ensure compatible development with the surrounding existing communities with no out-of-pocket cost to any property owners. We notice the purpose of this assessment within the current MSBU document has been modified from the county's initial notice to targeted parcel owners in 2014. When was this modified and by whom? And why were targeted parcel owners not notified of this material change? In summary, this MSBU was flawed from the beginning and should be voided. Further, questions still remain on the ethics and propriety of using establishment of this MSBU to essentially fund the settlement of a land-use compatibility conflict between the county, the developer, and affected establishment communities. Thank you. I'd like to enter a Stein statement from a neighbor who recently purchased a property in 2019, and the seller had no disclosure about this MSBU.
Motion to approve? No, motion to receive.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hi. My name?
If you take that end of it and just bend it down like this, maybe the gentleman here will help you.
I'm sorry.
He's going to help you.
Okay.
There you go.
That's because I'm short and going to the ground. That's where I'm going.
Hold it down like this.
That's where I'm going. That's where all of us are going. Okay. I hope. My name is Madeline Capodano. I live at nine one one eight Nile Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, in Riverside Village. I have been there since nineteen thirty-eighty-three. I'm still there. God willing, I'll be there for a while yet, okay? I am upset because somebody says we have a homeowners association in Riverside Village. We do not. We never have. I've never paid any dues. I've never been approached about going to a homeowners association meeting. So I want you to know that I've talked to some of my neighbors. They never even know, knew about this meeting. The only way I knew about it was that somebody living in another development told me about it. So I don't know who that person is, but they're, they must be living in some other Riverside Village, because it sure isn't mine. Okay? I just want you to know that. But it's un-American not to know that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Connie San Filippo, and I reside within the Lakeside Village section of Heritage Lake subdivision at forty-nine sixty-one Christmas Circle, Newport Ritchie, Florida. I request a delay in any further actions relating to the activation of the Oaks Park MSBU until all property owners are properly notified and fully informed of the options available to us. A friend of mine residing in Southern Oaks made me aware of pending board actions. When I attended my own village meeting on September twenty-second, I asked for an update on this matter, and board members were not made aware of this matter and could not provide any information. So I'm asking you to delay any further actions until all the citizens in this area are notified. And that's, that's all I have to say, and I hope your decisions are good.
Thank you.
So following Ms. Coburnick, uh, the next three signed up are Pastor Troy Peterson, Ron Orchard, and Cheryl Orchard.
I will also be speaking on R sixty-eight. I'm Diane Coburnick, five thousand and one South Shore, uh, in Newport Ritchie. So I want to point out some facts here that many of the, of you board members do not know about. Facts, this property's value was artificially increased by the same individuals buying it at a higher price through different entities. The county purchased only one of the two parcels of this property for three million dollars, paid ten, and, and on the MSBU, you're including ten thousand including, closing costs, as well as charging twenty thousand dollars of staff time for the purchase of the, for this MSBU. County's own inter-office memo admitted that there is a large category two wetlands on approximately seventy-five percent of the parcel. Yet the county's presentation showed that a hundred and two units were approved. That's in 2014. This gear tactics is one that the county seems to be using a lot. The county's own documents admitted that this project was not located, was not located in a great location for multifamily, not compatible to the surrounding area, and will cause significant traffic, yet it was approved. Representative Richard Cochrane agreed that state would pay one-point-five million towards the purchase and also stated he was hoping to get more money in 2015 state budget. There would be no need for the assessment, so I'm asking, where did the one-point-five million go to? Your purchase agreement was contingent on a clean environmental report, yet this was never tested. But the county purchased the property as is again. Resolution fourteen-two-thirty, state, commencing with the 2014-2015 fiscal year. The K, so I'm asking you, if this resolution is saying, commencing in 2014-2015, when this resolution was done, is the county back taxing all of these people up to 2014? This project was started in November twenty-five, twenty thirteen. That's eight years ago. Current property owners have no idea of any of these facts. Do you believe you owe it to your constituents, and most of all, the ones that'll be paying for this, to get the facts straight? Thank you.
Thank you.
No clapping?
No clapping.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. Pastor Troy Peterson, sixty-eight, twenty-seven, Sandra Drive, Port Ritchie, Florida. First off, I want to thank everybody for what you guys do for our community. I want to personally thank Christina Fitzpatrick for coming out and, uh, helping with our Care Fest. To see you get your hands dirty and just to go over and above what the homeowner was asking for really shows your, shows your heart and compassion and servant leadership. Last meeting, two weeks ago, um, I presented with you guys with an opportunity, and I'd like to make a motion here today that I and the Somebody Cares pastors association would head up the invocation, uh, the prayer for commissioners' meetings. Last month, I shared with you out of Colossians one-three that we give thanks to God, our Father, and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we're always praying for you. So even right now, over at the Oasis Coffee Spot, there are pastors praying specifically for you guys for this meeting today. Pastor Dick Maxwell and I just came from there. They prayed over us, and, and so we wanted to let you know that we are praying for you guys, that, that God would give you guys wisdom to run, to run Pasco County. I also shared with you last month, uh, out of John fourteen-one, "Let not your heart be troubled; you believe in God, believe also in Me." We know that, that "Me" is talking about Jesus Christ. And in verse six, as I shared with you, Jesus said, said unto them, "I am the way, the truth, and the life; no man come to the Father but by Me." And so that's what I'm saying, I, I, I'm seeing, I'm not trying to point fingers or anything like that, but the only way to truly get your prayers answered is to pray to Jesus Christ, to the Father. And so Jesus addressed this in Matthew six, uh, starting in verse five. He says, "When you pray, you should not be as the hypocrites do; then pray," see, "they pray that they may be seen amen. Verily I say unto you, they have their reward." And in verse seven, Jesus said, "When you pray, don't use vain repetitions." So in other words, not written-out prayers that are just always the same prayer, but praying according to God's word, praying in Jesus Christ's mighty name. And so when you pray, don't use vain repetitions as the heathen do, for they, uh, they think their words are many, that they be heard, uh, that they will be heard for their many words. And so I'd like to make that motion, that we would like to come in, um, and do the invocation for you guys as we continue to pray for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Ron Orchard, sixty-seven, nineteen Manor Beach Road, Newport Ritchie, Florida, the Green Key neighborhood. Like one of you in the past said, "Not that water issue again." Well, yes, this is the water issue again. By now, you all know, or should all know, about the issues that are going on in the Green Key neighborhood. Some of these issues have been going on for over twenty-five years, some for less. Can anybody tell me why we are always pushed to the bottom of the pack when things are to be done? Are we Pasco's little dirty secret? I don't know. We've been told that Pasco cannot do anything right now due to funding, et cetera, okay? But what can you do for us now to help us in this situation? We've been told that we're going to try to have a meeting with Newport Ritchie, the city of, okay? Has not been happening yet, as far as I know, nothing is set up yet for the city, okay? I'd ask that if the county board, whoever, can give me some dates that are good for the county, times and places, I will go to the city and see if we can get that set up for a meeting, okay? I would hope that we'd have representation from the county, from the city, and from the neighborhood, that we can discuss these issues and possibly come up with some answers for the fixes going forward, okay? It would be the best interest of everybody to solve these problems, because we are not going away. Thank you.
Following Ms. Orchard, we have Gail Schledgerberg, Tom Summers, and Tanya Solier.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Orchard. I live at sixty-seven nineteen Manor Beach Road in Newport Ritchie. Today I'm here from last meeting we talked, after we had the last meeting. Our rain and our water was so bad, all our drainage from the dry weather has not dried up, it's sludge. They've been out there a couple of years ago, tried to get a camera in there. All the drainage pipes are completely blocked. During, a week after the last commissioners' meeting, a little girl had to have a canoe to take her home from the bus stop. This is getting ridiculous in there. There's elderly people in there that can't get out. There's cars that get stuck up in the road in that saltwater. The flap was not working the last time. We ended up with fourteen to sixteen inches of water just on Manor Beach, and we're higher. So, and that's because the elevation was changed. And it flows into them other streets, and they're just, they can't even get out of their driveways, they can't go to work. Well, my husband got a pair of waders on, and he went down to the flap on Manor Beach. It was closed, wasn't open to let the water flow back into the bayou. He called Public Works. Public Works called him, said, "I'm here. It's working now, it's working." My husband said, "I was there ten minutes ago, it was not working." He took a pipe to pry that open. That's not how it's supposed to work. That put a lot more water in the neighborhood than it should have. The deterioration of the roads in there, if you go down from where the bridge goes over to the island and come back to my address, the road is in good shape, because the water don't lay on it, because it runs off on everybody else, okay? The deterioration of those roads is created from all that water from nineteen ninety-four that has been flowing after they put the sewers in. Pasco sent out a flood plan, public meeting to discuss flooded drainage and water quality issues. It's determined that an overall plan is needed for effective managing. This was back in nineteen ninety-four. They had a plan. Nothing's been done. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, if I could? Uh, just want to say, Cheryl, Ron, the pictures that I just showed were from your neighborhood just from yesterday. I'm going to have a legislative ask coming up for Green Key area to deal with the stormwater drainage. By the way, I think the pipe we put in with your area was the one area that was actually dry. But I'm going to put a legislative ask in for addressing the stormwater to get that fixed in the paving assessment and actually even bring it up to Green Key coming up this year, so you're not forgotten.
One thing on that.
Please, let's talk later. I want to get to fuck with this.
Can't go back and forth.
Good morning. My name's Gail Swedberg. I live at four nine one seven Largo Terrace, and that's in the Green Key area as well. I just kind of wanted to do a follow-up on the meeting that I attended August twenty-fourth, where we discussed the Green Key issues. I know a lot of trucks are down there, and they're putting asphalt in the holes, but what happens is, when it rains and it's flooding, they pop out. So, you know, over and over again, you're doing these Band-Aid fixes, and it's costing money, and they're not lasting. You know, and I'm not going to repeat a lot of the issues that have already been discussed. What I would like to request is that the meeting that we were talking about getting the city and the county together could possibly be put on the agenda for the upcoming meeting, uh, November the second. I went to the city meeting last week, and I requested that they also consider putting it on the agenda for that meeting, so that we can finally just address it. it on the agenda for that meeting, so that we can finally just address it. I think some of the frustration comes when, you know, you can't update everyone on every single little detail, but when we can't get responses, sometimes we all get agitated because we want to know, you know? These are things that are on everybody's mind, and so many people, we've had meetings, but not all of them are here today. So it's not just, you know, it seems like it's us that comes to the meeting, but so many people wanted to be here, and they just couldn't be. So, I know when I did go to the city meeting, they really weren't aware of any type of special meeting for this, except for, Mike Peters did mention that he had spoke with Jack Mariano about the issue. So I just wanted to, again, reiterate that, to see if we can possibly put that on the agenda for November the second. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's William Gillis, I live at ninety-eight, forty-one, Elvernon Drive, in Riverside Village Estates. Briefly, there's some confusion, there's a Riverside Village, which there is no HOA, which the lady spoke of before, and then there's Riverside Village Estates, which does have an HOA, and we pay dues annually to take care of our ponds and drainage. I'm praying for you too. I guess, the old saying, "If you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." I think we're here. I think it's time to put the shovels down. Seven years have passed, that should have never passed, and this thing should not be where it's at now. I mentioned at the last meeting that we're going to be right back where we were in 2014. We went through all this. All the neighborhoods were allowed to speak at that time. We had, I don't know, a hundred and fifty, two-hundred people here at that last meeting, when you guys passed the MSBU. So, again, put the shovels down. Now, I think there are some options we can look at that may alleviate some issues that the other neighborhoods are concerned about. For one, opening the Amazon to Southern Oaks, in my opinion, is a bad idea. It's just going to create traffic both ways that neither one of us want. The other thing is, drainage in our area is pitiful. Some of it's probably the HOA's fault, and some of it's the county's fault. We have storm culverts that cross Elvernon Road that run into another piece of property that is being proposed to be developed, that don't flow very well. Right now, our ponds are about four foot higher than they should be. So we have issues in that area, all the way around, okay? Now, the property I was talking about, Elvernon Drive, is being proposed to change that zoning to multifamily. We went through that in 2014. Multifamily doesn't belong there. But if I don't have any other avenue, I propose that that property, which takes all the drainage from Heritage Lakes through Riverside Village, across Elvernon, that with the MSBU, you put a stipulation in there to look at maybe trading that property. And if you decide to build on the Amazon property to do something, you limit it to fifty single-family homes. That's what that road will handle, period. It could set back far enough, you could take the wetlands, you could maybe donate it through the state or something like that, to alleviate some of the cost to us. I think there's a lot of ways we can solve these issues without just putting the burden on the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Gillies, you signed up his bill, is that correct?
Yes, fair enough.
William.
Yeah, Mr. Gillis is my dad.
And is Tom Summers, does he want to speak? Because I had called his name.
I'm sorry?
Tom Summers, does he want to speak here too?
At the present time, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You want to call a few more people?
Yes, so, thank you. After Ms. Salyer, I got it right this time. Curtis Marsh, Bob Mitchell, and Renee Rivard. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Tanya Salyer, ten-seven-hundred Philly Lane, not Green Key, but still flooded. Last time, they said that they were going to do something. They have, I don't know if you guys did this, or if the, some of the homeowners got together, but you lime-rocked a part of Meridian. Meridian is not Philly, Philly is still very well underwater. You guys talk about a paving project, and elevating our roads by two feet is not going to do anything. You guys tried that way back when, I think it was like fifteen years ago, twenty now. We flooded once, and you guys were out there paving, you paved, and now we're kind of back in the same situation. What elevating the roads will do is let everything drain towards our houses, which, sorry, not okay. The person who I was asked to speak with, I have emailed, I have not received a response, other than Mr. Mariano saying that, to asking people to check on the situation. In the beginning, you guys actually looked like you guys were going to do something. But I've, it seems like now, you guys are waiting just for the water to recede naturally, this problem to go away for about six months, and then, next April, I will be back here saying, "Hey, can we do something about this?" We have driveways we can't drive out of, we have a road we can't drive down, our mail trucks barely get down it, and we're all kind of frustrated. Now, I'm the one here talking to you, because you guys have meetings on Tuesdays at ten AM, and the majority of people work, or can't get out of their homes. We have our co, our tenant, who lives at ten-seven-twenty-four, has not been able to use her driveway in months. So it's getting to the point where you guys don't look like you're going to do anything. And I feel sorry for the people in Green Key, but we're not the same. I know you're doing a watershed study, that's going to take till 2025. What happens next year when we can't get vehicles through again? The back, their homes flooded. So, kind of waiting for you guys to do something, anything, at this point. You guys have a very nice day, sorry to bother you again, but until something gets done, you're going to keep seeing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Curtis Marsh, I live at thirty-two-twenty-two Masonville Loop, Holiday. I'm here for a completely different topic. Going to be asking to get, have rabbits added to the banned sale, along with cats and dogs, and be working towards that goal in the future. Rabbits, if you don't know, are the third most popular pet, which makes them the third most dumped pet. This year alone, because of COVID, we've taken, our small rescues taken in, in twenty-five rabbits since the first of September. There've been a total of sixty-six rabbits. We've been talked, spoken, or contacted about either dumped, or someone's about to dump them. That's the new thing, is to call the rescues and threaten to dump the rabbits. We feel that if you could cut down on the rabbits being sold in pet stores, that hopefully there wouldn't be so many people buying them at twenty-five dollars and then throwing them out a week later. This year's been horrendous with rabbits, baby rabbits dumped on Tuesday, that were obviously bought over the weekend. It's just gotten that bad. So, you'll be hearing more from us, just wanted to give you a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Mitchell, I live at ninety-three-twenty-two Sacramento Drive. I've been there for thirty-one years. I've seen a lot of development. I worked for the sheriff's office for twenty-nine. Seen a lot of development here in Pasco County. But also, seen a lot of problems in floods. Nineteen ninety-three, the great flood, on the other side of nineteen. Two thousand sixteen, my wife had to walk from Little Road up to our house on Sacramento Drive, in three feet of water. And now you want to put apartment complex two blocks further in the back of that, so we can have more water. What are you going to do with all this? The traffic is going out that, on St. Lawrence anymore. It takes eight to twelve people to get through a light, which only, that's three at a time. We've got so much traffic coming from River Chase, the back of our development, and anybody else that's cutting through, if that gate's open from the side of the condos back there. We don't need any apartments. If it's going to be zoned, it should be zoned just for single-family houses, to the amount that can hold it, not two-hundred apartments, which would be almost extra four-hundred cars. Also, when you build those, I just paid my last assessment from our roads, from back in five years, six years ago. So, when them trucks go back to start building those houses, who's going to repair our roads? Am I going to have to pay again for their problems? Why? Shouldn't be back there. And otherwise, there also should be a construction lane going back, if there's even new houses back there, not like it was when you built River Chase and tore our roads up. So I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
After Ms. Rivard, I have Marletha Lassiter, Drew Bochetti, sorry if I pronounced that wrong, I'm so sorry, and Miriam Butler.
Renee Rivard, PO Box eighty-one Cortez, Florida. Good morning, commissioners. We work with some of you on the dog chaining law for Pasco County. It's nice to see you again. We're coming to you today with another issue, unwanted pet rabbits. First and foremost, rabbits should not be pets. You can easily break their backs if handled improperly, so they are definitely not suited pets for children. Secondly, judging by the number of pet rabbits given up, rabbits are an impulse buy with not much thought of the expense and care that goes into having a rabbit as a pet. We are working on this issue with five counties that make up the greater Tampa Bay area, Pasco, Hillsborough, Pinellas, Manatee, and Sarasota. Not a single county-run animal shelter takes in pet rabbits. Only four nonprofit facilities accept pet rabbits. Bishop SPCA in Manatee County took in seventy-six rabbits last year. The SPCA in Pinellas County took in two-hundred-and-forty-six pet rabbits last year. We don't have the statistics yet from the Humane Society in Pinellas, but we'll get those to you. And the Humane Society in Tampa took in a hundred-and-ninety pet rabbits as of July this year. There are no facilities that accept pet rabbits in Pasco County. A couple of your local Good Samaritans, the Schwartzes, started the Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue in two thousand nineteen. Since then, they have taken in over a hundred rabbits. Relying on fosters to help them, they cannot keep up with the overwhelming number of calls they get from people who are turned away from the nonprofits because they have no space. The Schwartzes told me that they turned away over sixty pet rabbits just this month. The Schwartzes spend a lot of their time chasing rabbits that have been let go into our neighborhoods by individuals who will no longer want them. Pet rabbits are not native to Florida, and they can easily die in temperatures below fifty degrees and above eighty degrees. They also don't know how to find food and shelter. Commissioners, we are asking for your help with this issue. As far as we can see, we have two options: either provide a facility to take in unwanted rabbits, or ban the retail sale of rabbits. It's not fair that private citizens have to pick up the mess and pick up the tab for this problem. These Good Samaritans are losing enjoyment of their lives and being bored in with the problem that pet stores are creating. At the very least, consider a seasonal ban in March and April to curb the impulse buys of rabbits for Easter. Thank you for your time and for all of that, for all that you do. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Marletha Lassiter, and I live at nine-four-five-seven Nile Drive, and the Oaks MSBU backs up to my property. In Riverside Village, we do not have an HOA, but myself and five volunteers walked the neighborhood and collected a hundred-and-thirty-four signatures in favor of enacting the MSBU, and we had one person who opposed, and that was presented to you at our last meeting. The MSBU was established in 2014, after many public meetings and much conversation, and we were happy to see that it was enacted at that time. Today, I can tell you that the rainstorm damage is terrible. I presented pictures of the flooded streets when we had seven inches of rain in that one rainfall last month. Our streets were totally flooded. The drainage does not take away the water that we have in that neighborhood, and my fear is if there's any development on that property, which is part of our watershed, that we're going to have some serious problems. I have FEMA for my house, because I'm, you know, a conscious homeowner, and I started out paying three-hundred-and-forty dollars a year for FEMA coverage. It's now up to eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars. I think that we've had a lot of development in our area, and they're the experts on flood control. Also, my daughter, who lives on Amazon, called out the county, the mosquito control people came out, and sprayed her backyard, which is not, you know, public property, but it's flooded because of all the water that we have. So the other thing that we have is, we have inadequate traffic control at our exits onto the highway. At Little Road and St. Lawrence, we have maxed out on traffic volume. Little Road and Heritage Lakes don't have deceleration lanes or acceleration lanes to handle any additional traffic coming through our area. And it has been a problem for quite a while. In the morning, at seven, eight-thirty, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, you wait through two traffic lights to get out, if you're on St. Lawrence Drive. We have numerous accidents at those intersections, because it's unsafe. And the FEMA ten-year plan did order for a reduction of pollution going into the Anclot River Basin, yet there were thousands of acres that have been developed since. And my fear is, the flooding is very dangerous during hurricanes in our area. We had, did have a car go off in one of the ditches, and it sunk.
Thank you for your comments, your time's up.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Drew Bochetti, I live at sixty-eight-twenty, Nara Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. As a human, a renter, a small business owner, and a U.S. veteran, I'm addressing these issues. The concern is, it took five phone calls since August ten to achieve getting communication to the commissioners. The septic problem that I have for my neighbor has been since Hurricane Irma. There is no record of it at all, because state of Florida and the county don't keep previous complaints. I'm a technology guy. We need to keep back orders of technology on how we take our complaints into the systems, and that goes for county and state. County Commissioner Service seemed to have no idea which department handled septic, whether it was code enforcement, stormwater, road and bridge, nobody had an idea. No county septic policy. Septic, I'm sure, has been around for years, and we don't have a septic policy? When houses are built with septic, I'm sure we inspect for the septic to be put in, but on the flip side, when somebody buys a house, we don't worry about the septic problems. Again, no one knows whose district it is. I haven't told it's Ms. Starkies, Ms. Fitzpatrick's, or Mr. Mariano's. This should be a team commissioner problem to address whose district it is. Public health is our elected official's problem. It's not just my problem as an individual, but I'm asking for your help. It seems we're putting it off on the state from a county perspective. When there's a hurricane, safety-related items sink holes, the county works with the state to get accomplishments done. That's not how this is happening. I've sent emails, I've only got two responses, one Ms. Fitzpatrick, one Ms. Starky. I have asked, and yes, I spoke to Rich Jenkins, I've spoken to Sonya, I've spoken to, I think her name was Desiree. Again, no response from nobody. I'm sending to commissioners- If this were your neighbors, septic leaking, I'm sure it would be addressed appropriately. I'm a human individual, and so are the people behind me. I'm sure they wouldn't want raw sewage flooded in front of their driveway. No attempt was made to contact the daughter, which was a phone number I provided to Mrs. Miller, which is Mr. Oakley's assistant. No phone call attempt was made. It is not a crime scene. The state is asking for pictures of the raw sewage. Are we serious? Is this how we handle things, is pictures? It seems a little irrelevant to me. It's raw sewage, it's a public health issue. And because of the eviction situation, it's difficult to find another place to live. Now, I have typed here, "Thank you for not helping this human, renter, small business owner, and U.S. veteran." I don't know what it's going to take to ask for help, but I'm asking for help. Please, it's more than just my neighborhood. We all share neighborhoods, and I'm sure none of us want raw sewage, as well as you probably wouldn't want, next to you, living it. The smell may not be to kill you, but it's horrendous, and it's sad to see that we all have to deal with this. Thank you.
Sir? Yes, excuse me, sir. I remember speaking to you directly on the telephone, and it is a health department, it is my district, and it is a health department issue, and I have reached out to our health official, Mike Napier, about this, and we do need to follow through with the health department. I just...
I'll continue to be in touch. I've already spoke to Mr. Napier, Mr. Compton myself.
Thank you.
Following Ms. Butler, I have Nina, and last name is, I can't really read, is it Perino, and Charles Eldred, and those are the last that I have to sign up today in person.
Good morning. I'm Miriam Butler. I represent Riverside Village Estates Homeowners Association. I live at 4347 Genesee Lane in Riverside Village Estates. And I'm here, first of all, to say that on behalf of the members of our HOA, we want the MSBU to be enacted. I have not heard from any residents within our community of 96 homes who have said they do not want to be assessed and have that begin. They feel that if we had been assessed starting in 2014 or so, we would be halfway through that assessment already, and it is not the fault of the residents that it wasn't enacted. I heard some people say that it was a back-room deal, or I heard someone say that today, and I just want to reiterate, it's understandable that some people may not have known about it, but this was a highly-publicized campaign with a great deal of involvement from over, well, the group was called 5333, I believe, and that was the number of voters who were impacted by the MSBU issue on Amazon Drive. So, we feel strongly that we want what you promised to be enacted. I've heard mention of other multifamily possibilities. This community is all single-family homes. If you put in multifamily, we're talking about hundreds of more cars. It would probably entail maybe opening up Amazon Drive, which would mean thousands of extra trips every day from people that are cutting through, not only the residents. You have to wind through five neighborhoods or so, depending on what direction you go through, through single-family homes on single-family streets to get to Little Road or Starky. It's, the density, the traffic would change the quality of life in the neighborhood, and we just want you to honor what was agreed to in 2014. Thank you.
My name is Nina Perino. I live in 2678 Megan Court, Palm Harbor, Florida. I'm just here to say I support a retail sale ban of rabbits in pet stores, as Renee pointed out, and the rescue has pointed out. It's a huge problem. I myself didn't know. A lot of nonprofits did not take in rabbits, and I've been doing animal advocacy for 25 years. I did not know that, but I follow a lot of small animal rescues across the nation, and it's a problem everywhere. And when these bunnies are found outside, living on their own, people just leave them in their cages, rained on. They don't know how to eat. They don't know how to find food or shelter, and they're diseased, full of fleas, anemic. Sometimes they can't be saved. If you want an animal, any animal, be a responsible pet owner, but most humans are not able to do that. They're just impulse buyers for Easter and whatever, buy chicks and ducks and bunnies for their kids, and then dump them a couple of weeks later because they don't want to take care of them, and kids don't know how to take care of them, and the parents don't have time to take care of them, so don't buy them. It's time to stop catering to human wants and greed, and think about the animals that suffer as a problem of that, as an extension of, well, we should have our choice of what we want. Well, too bad, because you have to be responsible, and you can't force people to be responsible, so just cut it out. Don't give them the opportunity to buy rabbits. It's ridiculous, and they can, you know how they can breed, and becomes an ongoing issue all across our state and in Pinellas County, because we're next, Pinellas County will be next to do the retail sale ban of rabbits and dogs and cats. So, if you care about animals at all, or even if you don't, it doesn't matter if you care if they, if their lives matter. It matters to them, their lives matter, and they only get one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning. My name is Charles Eldred. I live at 9824 Kingsport Avenue in Heritage Lake. Just a little background, I moved into Pasco County in 2005, so I was there when the streets flooded and St. Lawrence was closed for over a week. Heritage Lake Boulevard was closed for five or six days because it was flooded. Also, in 2012, St. Lawrence was closed for another week or so, Heritage Lake for another four or five days because it was flooded. I was very active in that 5533 from day one, and the people at Heritage Lake, our committee, we've met a number of times, and I'm here to concur with the young lady that was here two places ago. We want you to honor what was written in 2014 and move forward. I think everyone in Heritage Lake, or most people in Heritage Lake, have been aware of this, and we'd just like to move forward with it. Only you can tell us why we weren't charged our fees for the last seven years. We had no idea. I know I talked with Mike Fasano on two different occasions early on, and he said, "I can't charge you until I get the bill from the county." Well, I'm asking you now to submit that bill, and we'll start paying our fees. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you for your service.
He's the last one we had sign up. Does anyone else in the room wish to speak, come forward right now? If you will, line up. Is this the last one in the room who wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Janine Dombrowski. I just moved to 5550 Front Drive, Holiday, Florida. My concern is mostly Holiday. Just like everybody else, we have lots of flooding problems, Grand Boulevard floods, and there's a lot of traffic on it. People swerve to avoid those big puddles, and they don't even care about the other line of traffic. I know, obviously, everyone is having flooding issues. There's also septic tanks, a lot of them in Holiday, so I didn't even realize that could be such a concern. I've only been there three months. My other concern is all the panhandling. I understand that these are hard times. I'm a single mother. I've come from a one-bedroom house, or one-bedroom apartment with my daughter, to owning two properties in Pasco County. I understand how difficult it is to survive, and everything is going up, but these panhandlers, I know there's organizations out there that try to help them and give to them and donate them, but these people don't want the help, and they're really becoming a nuisance on the corners. They're hitting the traffic signals, harassing people. I care for them, I really, truly do, but it's becoming a serious problem, so much that I don't want to bring my 12-year-old daughter to a convenience store with me to go get a shake because of all the harassment. I don't walk in fear, I'm not afraid of them, but other people are. It's also what everyone that travels down 19 from Pinellas County gets to see when they come to our county. It should be slightly embarrassing for all of you. It's great that we're growing, and there's people moving here from out of state, and there's nice, beautiful homes down 54, but yes, the traffic, it's horrible. We have lots of infrastructure along, up and down the corridor of 19. I'd really like to see some of those builders being forced to take the dilapidated areas and build them up, maybe affordable housing for that single mom that is trying to survive. I'm trying to cover a lot of bases here. I want to find solutions. I just realized you have some organizations on your county website. I'd like to know what those organizations are doing, like, to solve the problems. We can't just keep donating to these people and expect it to go away. It's a Band-Aid. Also, I want to make everyone know that Pasco County is number two in human trafficking. This concerns me highly, and it should concern all of you. There's also, I found an organization towards that. I would really like to know what they're doing about it. Now it's the open border, and everyone flocking here from out of state. I don't live in fear, but my concerns are really high. We need to be very proactive on ending this. People are going to be trafficked here even more now, and this is going to affect years to come. So, I love Pasco County. I've lived in this county for a long time. I don't like to bash it, but some of the things that people are talking about on social media are actually true.
Thank you for your comment.
If you would email me, kstarky@pascocountyfl.net, I will get back in touch with you, and we'll go have coffee, and we'll talk about a lot of the things, and I'll explain to you what's going on, of the things you covered. There are a lot of my hot buttons, too.
Okay, awesome. I appreciate that.
Great. I'll enjoy working with you.
So, that leads us to WebEx, and we have two people to speak on WebEx.
The first person signed up in WebEx is Nancy Gray. Ms. Gray, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you can go ahead with your comments.
Yes, good morning. This is Nancy Gray. I live at 8502 Adonis Road, Newport Ritchie, 34654. Is that volume okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
We can hear you.
I've come before you again regarding Deer Lake. Wells Fargo at Little and Ridge had been permitted to drain their roof and driveway into the lake as their grandfathered in. This has caused the lake to overflow onto our property since rain started again in July. The waters come up more than 100 feet. The home next door's flooded their garage. Residents on Bridge have lost at least half their backyards. One homeowner's been calling Public Works since the beginning of September and can't get anywhere. We're being told our home, not our property, has to be in danger before the county will pump. Tax records show the lake belongs to Pasco County, but they've chosen to maintain it when they choose. The Florida Department of State clearly states a water runoff is not to be directed onto another's property. I contacted Swift Mud, they contacted Public Works by email, saying I requested pumping the lake and attached a 2019 emergency permit. I've called and can't get a return call. I don't believe Ms. Fitzpatrick has heard back either. As we've lost thousands of dollars in plants, trees, and crops since July, and have had to move what remains, I wonder what's happening in Crane's Roost. The property praiser site shows all of those lakes are privately owned. However, the county has received a permit from Swift Mud a month ago and has been pumping their lakes since that time. The residents have no water rising out of their lakes onto their property. Can I get the county to remove their water from my property, but residents in Crane Roost have pumps in every lake to keep the water level down in the lakes? Are we being penalized because we pay less than property taxes on a retirement home? I'm requesting that the county pump down the lake to its level before the bank dumped their water runoff into, the county in turn flooded our property. Then keep it down and come up with a permanent solution to the problem. Swift Mud's already determined that the county can get a permit to run, the banks runoff into the drains at Ridge and Little and over to the retention pond. It would take adding courage at the bank, as Ms. Fitzpatrick had suggested in our private meeting. I can't get a call back from the building department to determine if county permits required. I don't believe anyone in the county has looked into this solution. The problems were created by allowing the bank to dump their runoff into the lake. Again, I'm requesting that our county commissioners address the problem before we incur more damage than we already have. And at this point, it's going to take nine to 12 months to get that water back down in the lake if nothing is done. We need relief. We need our yards back. We need our property back. Is there anything you can do to force Public to pump the lake?
The next individual is Michelle Jimenez.
Hello, good afternoon. It's Michelle Jimenez from 8529 Grave Avenue, 34654 Newport Ritchie. My concern is also Deer Lake. Currently, the water is 100 feet across my property and 50 feet into my property, and it's also, I have a six-foot privacy fence. It is four feet in depth at the end of my fence, and currently 20 feet away from my septic tank system. If the water continues to rise and nothing is done, my home would completely be submerged in water soon enough, seeing that there's four feet already down there of water, and my septic tank will be submerged as well. I've called Public Service, Public Works. They also have told me, I've given them a service number, that they can't do anything, that that is considered private property. Come to find out, the county does own that. So, I don't understand why it would be such a hassle to just pump the lake and maintain it as it is property of the county. I also have had mold, serious mold issues in my house due to the moisture and the water that has come from the lake. I can't do anything for it. I can't stop the water. I've tried to slow it down as much as possible. My neighbors, as well as Nancy's, in the middle, the water is up to their porch at this point. I peeked over their fence. They haven't been here in a year, and the water is up to their home. They just aren't here to acknowledge it or know that it is. So, they're elderly couple as well, so I'm sure they're going to come home to mold and can't even, no longer, live in their home. The service number that I had put in with the Public Works Office was 47255. I haven't heard anything back. I called five several times, and they told me somebody's going to get back to me. Nobody has. I'm just here to ask that the water gets pumped, and as a disabled veteran, I didn't spend six years overseas serving my country to come back home and have to fight for my own home that I worked so hard for. I'm just asking for the county to do their part and pump the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on WebEx?
No one else on WebEx, sir.
So, that concludes the public comment portion of our meeting. We'll move on now. It's the time for resolutions.
Yes, sir.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Is anyone here for National 4-H Week? Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
They got an education.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 21295, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring October 3 through October 9, 2021, as National 4-H Week. Whereas 4-H started in 1902 with the original motto of "To Make the Best Better," and whereas 4-H is the nation's largest youth development and mentoring organization with over 6.5 million members, and whereas the 4-H Youth Development Program has served young people ages 5 through 18 in our... ages 5 through 18 in our state and in Pasco County since 1909, and whereas Pasco County's 4-H Youth Development Program's mission is to use a learn-by-doing approach to help youth gain the knowledge and skills they need to be responsible, productive citizens. And whereas to achieve its mission, 4-H assesses and the expertise, I'm sorry, accesses the expertise and resources of the University of Florida and a nationwide network of cooperative extension service facilities and staff. And whereas the 4-H program has broadened its program areas to encompass not only agriculture and animal science, but also public speaking, technology, wildlife, forestry, water conservation, engineering, and many other topics of interest to today's youth. And whereas 4-H youth and volunteers across Florida devote thousands of hours to serve their communities annually and other service activities which benefit the people of our state. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby proclaims the week of October 3 through the 9, 2021, as National 4-H Week, done and resolved in regular session with the quorum present and voting this 28th day of September, 2021.
Motion of second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Welcome. Is this one family or a couple? Okay. I wasn't sure, I was just feeling sorry for somebody, but... They're real active, and I have a grandson that's in 4-H right now, and I appreciate everything y'all do for the kids because it's a great program. The entire board I know appreciates all that you do. Would you like to speak?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for recognizing National 4-H Week and all the work that our kids do. I'm Shayla Ryder, I'm the Pasco County 4-H Agent, so I kind of oversee the program overall for the county. We have a couple of our kids that came, obviously a lot of our kids are in school right now, so some of them couldn't make it, and our team leaders and stuff like that. But I mean, we have over a dozen 4-H clubs throughout the county. We have, on average, around 300 kids enrolled every year in Pasco County 4-H, and they dedicate hundreds of hours to their projects, from animal science to STEM to environmental science, all the different project areas that you listed in the resolution as well. And they are involved at the, from the club level to county, district, state, and national levels within their 4-H project areas and all that kind of stuff. So they really dedicate a lot of their time and a lot of their effort into these programs and are just amazing youth, learning life skills and leadership and citizenship and all these things to become well-rounded youth and productive citizens for Pasco County and for Florida 4-H overall, and we're just very excited to recognize all of them, and we hope you all help us in celebrating National 4-H Week next week, so, but thank you again.
You've got Mini Luke Bryan right there in the hat.
I'd love to see if we can invite your 4-H group to our blueberry farm.
Okay.
All right, guys, ready here, one more, okay?
One more.
Come on. There we go. Good job.
Oh, I'm going to get in trouble. I'm standing here. I don't want to go home. We might...
So that's Camden, he's seven. Chloe, Loban, L-O-B-A-N. He's seven, Chloe Loban. Yeah, she's 12. And then Colin in the back, the tall one, that's Colin Loban.
Right, you've got to keep moving.
He is 17, he's the regional treasurer.
He's Raleigh, R-A-L-E-I-G-H.
R-A-L-E-I-G-H.
He is 11.
Kylie, K-Y-L-I-E.
Y-L-I-E, she's six. Do you need to ask her?
Yeah.
His last name is P-E-A-T-E-R, R-O-S-S-I-C-K, hers is new, N-E-W.
No.
Okay, our next order of business is our consent agenda. I have a full sheet, and in this full sheet I have C7 to withdraw, C8, pull and revise, C16, pull and revise, C33, withdraw, C35, pull and revise, C59, pull and revise, C65, withdraw, and C9, pull and revise. Got a motion for the rest of the items?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, 5-0. We'll move on to C7.
No, that's a withdrawal.
C8.
Morning, Commissioner Chairman, Nictario Spito's Planning and Development. C8 is the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity Rebuild Florida HUD CDBG MIT grant for the Resiliency Pasco Community Sustainability Plan and the Living Shorelines Plan. It is revised to include the necessary budget amendment information for the grant-funded positions for two full-time employees and one part-time employee.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question, I'm glad we're bringing this forward, I was going to pull it just for a quick discussion. One of the conditions, one of the three conditions is supposed to benefit low and moderate income, it's supposed to meet a particular urgent need, aid in the prevention or elimination of slumming blood. What I'd like to do is make sure, as you go through this, through the process, I know it's going to be a longer process, but as quick as you can, take a close look at, let's say, the Green Key area and also the Lee Jolene Van Durren, because I think those are two key areas that fit to that.
Yes.
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0. C16.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. This was to replace some air conditioning equipment at the West Pasco Judicial Center. When we uploaded the performance and payment bonds, they were not fully complete in the upload. Completed performance and payment bonds have been provided to the clerk and distributed, and with that, we still recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second. I got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passed 5-0. C33 is withdrawn, C35 pull and revise.
Good morning, Commissioner and Chairman, my name is Ray Zepares for Survey and Mapping Division, and we have a pull and revise on C35. The original joint consent documentating match the one that was uploaded in the CB+ that's the reason we did it.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Marcy Esberg, Director of Community Development. We have amended the first renewal agreement for the language on the title and the first paragraph to read "Ongoing and as needed appraisals for the CDBG DR program," and we also changed the 21 to 20 award bid.
Mr. Chairman, one question, you say Elfers Park area, but is this Elfers Parkway?
No, this is the Elfers Project, the DR Project for Elfers.
Okay, well, I'd like to get with you on that later.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion passed 5-0, thank you. C65 is withdrawn, C9, pull to discuss.
Yes, I would like to discuss that today, and if Terry Peters has an update, because that day I also brought up to remove the multifamily from C2 when we discussed, and I had seconded the motion for the moratorium, but that was supposed to have an updated presentation within 180 days, so I would just like to see an update or know where we are along in the process, and then possibly just have an additional 90 days so we can move forward, so we can have a better understanding on how to move forward with the presentation.
Are you referring to the pulling of multifamily from the C2 zoning district?
No, the moratorium.
The moratorium, okay. Where we're at with the moratorium, we have our consultant that's currently going through numerous MPUD, Master Planning and Development projects that have occurred over the past few years, and they're analyzing what the developments have enabled in terms of what can happen within the MPUD and what has actually taken place out in the field and built, and that's taking a bit of time to get through each of those individual MPUDs. That's essentially where we're at in the analysis of what is happening with multifamily currently in the county.
Because I would like to know the entitlements that are already, that they already have, and would you be able to have an additional update in 90 days instead of an additional 180 days?
Why is that, what are you worried about? They're going through a pro, I'm just curious what you're worried about, it's my district, so what are you concerned about?
I would just like to, in a timely manner, have an update or a presentation so we can move forward.
Move forward with what?
With a presentation, so they can update us on the entitlements.
So they're not ready, you have a situation where staff is slammed with all the projects that are coming into this county right now. So you have a choice of pulling them off projects that need to be moved forward now or putting all their energy into this, I mean, that's your option.
I would like to see it done sooner than later, and just...
It's a timing issue, it's a problem, it's a timing issue.
It's going to be rough or tough just to get it done.
Move to approve, candidate's recommendation.
Got a motion of second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Okay, that concludes the consent items, we'll move on to the regular items. Ms. Starky, I believe you said you had to leave early?
Yeah, so I think Sean's going to do a presentation, and then I just may not be able to stay for the time certain, so we'll see.
We talked to Sean, Sean Sullivan, come on up, from Regional Planning Council, he's going to give a shorter version just because it's been a longer morning, so he'll be appreciative of that.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Thank you for having me here today.
Yes, sir.
I'll run through this pretty quick, but I do represent the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, we're one of 10 regional planning councils throughout the state of Florida. We're also the first, we're beginning our 59th year of service this year. So, Mr. Chairman, we represent six counties comprised of 5,000 square miles in geographic area, home to 3.8 million people, the 17th largest metropolitan economy in the United States, and if we were our own country, we'd have the 55th largest economy in the world. We look through a lens, Mr. Chairman, of five priorities: climate resiliency, regional economic competitiveness, emergency management, environmental stewardship, and transportation. My mission statement, Chairman, Commissioner Mariano, this year, we're grateful for your leadership. In terms of economic development, Mr. Chairman, we're designated Economic Development District by the U.S. Department of Commerce. We are responsible to draft and update annually comprehensive economic development strategy. We also have an economic analysis program, we have three economists who work in our office. We recently completed a hurricane awareness project, I'll get to in a minute, and of course CARES Act, we still have CARES Act funding. So, Mr. Chairman, about a year and a half ago, we received some supplemental Irma, Hurricane Irma, funding, and we developed a video, it's about 20 minutes in length, talking about what if a category five hurricane, we simulated hitting Indian Rocks Beach. We used specifically video from the aftermath of Hurricane Michael to help tell the story. I would encourage, if you could check it out on our website, we did win a national award from the National Association of Development Organizations for that project. Just go through these, some GIS work, I really don't want to get into it too detailed. Recently, we completed an economic impact analysis for Pasco County, and specifically to take a look at the industry cluster and Zephyr Hills, we presented that to the City Council recently, and again, we've got detail on our website. Also recently, we worked with the Rivagate Pond District in the city of Newport Ritchie, we did a resilient, rapid urban design project for the city of Newport Ritchie. Some of the details, we'll go into it in detail, but that's my favorite slide of all because it kind of shows the entrance into the district.
Very nice.
Thank you. We also did talk about the industry cluster we did for Zephyr Hills. We're working right now with county staff on the revitalization strategy for US 19 in the West Market District here in Pasco County. We also do emergency preparedness, we prepare hurricane disaster planning guides for a number of counties in the region. Specifically, Mr. Chairman, we're also designated by the Department of Environmental Management, emergency manager, scratch that, to work with the local emergency planning committee. We chair that and coordinate that effort for the six-county region. Some of the details are there. As I mentioned, our disaster planning guides, also the environment, I mentioned that, that's one of our, certainly one of our priorities. Specifically, right now, we know there is a red tide event that's ongoing. We coordinate a call every two weeks with the six counties in the region, we share information where red tide has been prevalent, what some of the concentrations are in various parts of the region, we know that there is red tide right now in the region. We also work with the Florida Department of Transportation, the stormwater management. Basically, this is the public education element, we're awarded approximately $100,000 each year from the state DOT to work with counties within the region, and I must say, Pasco County is always at the table when it comes to that particular element of what we do. We also have a successful GIS program that we offer our counties and cities. We're partnering right now with the nine other RPCs in the state of Florida with the Department of Environmental Management for a 2020 statewide regional evacuation study that was approved by the state legislature last session. Transportation and land use, Mr. Chairman, we're very, this picture might look somewhat familiar, granted, it is a simulation of flooding on US 19, it's a resilient Tampa Bay project, Pasco County MPO is one of the three POs that we worked with, along with Forward Pinellas and Hillsborough MPO, sponsored by FDOT and USDOT. This project we're particularly proud of, it was one of 11 transportation resiliency projects funded in the nation. We were asked to go to Washington, D.C. a couple of years ago and present this to the USDOT Transportation Research Board, and we simulated two specific sites in Pasco County with inland flooding and how to deal with that, how to make your infrastructure become more resilient. We recently formed, a couple of years ago, the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Coalition, the 16th type of its type in the country, where we worked with the state legislature last year, we testified before two committees in the House, subsequently invited to the governor's signing resiliency legislation in Topin Springs back in May. As of today, we have, this slide should be updated, we have 31 local government partners and over 90 private sector partners. Recently, Mr. Chairman, we were awarded a grant from FDEP, FY21 Holdover Monies, we're the only RPC in the state awarded this $50,000 grant through Chairman Mariano's leadership. He specifically asked us to look at living shorelines and protecting private property from storm surge, and we're working, we just wrapped up this project, it's in legal review right now, and I'll be happy to present more. And we're working, uh, we just wrapped up this project. It's in legal review right now and I'll be happy to present more detail through the chair in the near future. Uh, we recently completed a, a project funded by the United States Department of Energy, again, one of nine in the nation that we were funded to participate in. We're very proud of this project. Talk about solar innovation throughout the Tampa Bay region. We're in the process right now, Mr. Chairman, of developing a regional resiliency action plan. That's one of about a dozen objectives in a memorandum of agreement that was approved by this, this board back in twenty eighteen, um, as well as twenty-one other governments in the region. Uh, and we'll have more detail on that, but we're ready to roll that out at our summit scheduled right now for the end of January. We also activated within the last two years of five oh one C three. We were fortunate to partner with J.P. Morgan Chase. They gave us a half million, scratch that, five hundred thousand dollar, a half million dollar grant to look at, uh, housing and resiliency housing, particularly as it relates to low and moderate income structures. Folks who live in those structures. And I mentioned our summit scheduled for the end of January, uh, twenty twenty-two. This will be our second summit. Uh, we would have had one last year. Of course, COVID threw a curveball at us. But we're, we're really excited to release the regional resiliency action plan. If I were what, I can't help it. Every time I walk through the door and look at the trophy case in the lobby, Pasco County is well represented over the years with our rep. And this is our, as I mentioned briefly, this is our resilience and energy assessment of communities and housing funded by J.P. Morgan Chase. This summit will be scheduled for May sixth in the spring. And that's a quick rundown on what we do. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. So I was on the search committee when we hired you and we did a great job.
Thank you very much.
You're doing fantastic work. And I have a sponsor for your, um, the summit in January. I've sent that to Commissioner Long.
Oh, terrific.
They're a NACO gold sponsor, whatever, platinum sponsor, whatever they call it, so.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the great work you're doing. Your, uh, work on this resiliency and helping us protect our coast is fantastic. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, move on to R sixty-seven.
That's the time certain one, sir.
Oh, it is? I don't think I saw that. Oh, here I did too.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Administrator for Public Services. I'm here for, today for Keith Wiley, Director of Parks and Recreation. We had an emergency back at our office, so he needed to be with his team. Um, today, we're talking about the requests that came from the previous board meeting, PRN two one dash zero two three three. Inter-local Agreement: Pasco County Tax Collector Reimbursement of Expenses Associated with the Uniform Method of Collection of Non-Advalorem Assessment for the Oaks Park Municipal Service Benefit Unit. Clicker here. So this is the, the site location of where this is. And some, I think I'm missing a slide here. So let me talk about some of the project background. Let me back up here. I guess we're missing a slide. Okay, here we go. Project background. So wanted to remind the board that, um, on June twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, the board did adopt ordinance number fourteen dash ten, creating the Oaks Park Municipal Service Benefit, uh, MSBU, and Resolution Number fourteen dash two thirty, authorizing the use of the uniform method for levy collection and enforcement of the non-advalorem assessments for projects authorized pursuant to Chapter one ninety-seven, Flores Statue. The purpose of the assessment is to provide open space within a half-mile walking distance of the surrounding community service area. The cost and the term, the MSBU is expected to charge one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight lots on an annual assessment of a hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-nine cents per year for a term of fifteen years based on the acquisition cost of the three million dollars. The start date, the non-advalorem assessment will be presented to the B C C to certify on or before September fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, following a public hearing, and property owners can expect to see the assessment on their two thousand twenty-two tax bill. So with that said, the recommended action for the board, uh, approve the inter-local agreement with the Pasco County Tax Collector, thereby reimbursing them for costs associated with using the uniform method for levy collection enforcement of a non-advalorem assessment within the Oaks Park Municipal Service Benefit Unit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't sound like they're on.
At your, at your last meeting, I had advised you that the next step was to enter into an interlocal agreement. When we researched it, we found that the, the interlocal agreement with the property praiser had been executed. Um, the, the tax collector's agreement, which is before you today, um, he had asked you for a one-year deferral and that one-year deferral has morphed into this. So the, so you have an agreement with property praiser. You need an agreement with the tax collector. The tax collector's agreement is brought to you today.
Press the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, twenty fourteen, I was actually chair. Mrs. Starkey was sitting with me. She was chair in twenty sixteen when this was moving forward. Uh, we had vetted this all the way through. We had set the agreement ahead of time only because we're gonna try to get money from the state to actually cut the cost down. Did this get delayed? Why, why it got delayed further? We don't know. But at this point, I'm gonna move approval to move forward.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero.
I do want to say, I did think that Mr. Jilly's idea was interesting. Um, that doesn't mean we, I, I don't know if anyone wants to explore that or do you just wanna leave it how it is because the other property, this puts, this takes the other property out of development? I just thought it was interesting. I know we need to get this in the books so that it can, um, get on the rolls, but that doesn't mean if anyone else wanted to explore that idea.
If I can just add that the parks, recreation, natural resources, once the interlocal agreement is approved, will be working with the community's homeowners and, and determine the various park options, space options. So we're not done with just the interlocal agreement.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because there's still a lot of questions out there.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to discuss, to move, to direct the staff to do a county initiative, comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use classification of the property to recreational open space.
Second. I don't gotta bring it back, but.
Yeah, this would just be to, to start that process, to go forward so that the, so that, in, in fact, that it's a parks designation, not a, uh, not a development designation.
You have a second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. No clapping. Sorry. Okay, um, I have a time certain.
It is. Time certain's here. Time certain's here.
If you're okay with it, I'll do my, my commissioner items because I probably won't get to it this afternoon. And then we'll do Amber and then I'll leave.
No, the time certain's here.
All right. I'll, I'll do this next time. Not a problem.
All right.
Yeah. Uh, no, I'm gonna leave.
R sixty-seven?
I think Commissioner Mariano wants to say something.
Well, I do. It's my, my district and my deal.
That's just for a photo.
Um, if you don't mind, um, we welcome Representative Mariano, uh, to the chamber. Uh, do you want to say a few words about the Lindrick, um, uh, gift that we got from the state?
Yeah, so, good morning, everyone. Happy to be here with you today. It's actually been a very long time since I've been in the chamber with you guys, so I'm happy to be bearing good news. As you guys are aware, we got two projects done, uh, this year in Tallahassee. They're going through the county. One is Lindrick. Um, this, this board has been very pivotal in getting the improvement in water quality for these people and the improvement in the rates. Um, and so just want to thank you for all that you've done and, you know, whenever we can partner, it's great to partner and happy to bring home three point eight million dollars to keep moving this in, in the right direction. And a lot of that is thanks to you, thanks to you, Commissioner Starkey, for your advocacy, uh, and of course, Commissioner Mariano. A little, a little bias there. He made you my favorite, so.
Better be.
So members, um, with this money, I think I'd have, um, Mr. Carbala very briefly, like in one minute, explain what we're gonna do with this money because I promised the legislators it's going to capital improvements, so. Okay.
Did you hit the button?
He did. The button's in the back.
Now, that's, that's her button.
Probably. Uh, Mike Carbala, Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure. Yes, uh, we're, we're taking that money and actually putting it to use now, as a matter of fact. Coming before you in, in a few, few board meetings, we'll have an agreement with the F G O A where we're actually taking this money to get ahead of the game, start lining these sewer projects, uh, that are, that are leaking already in, into the system and make those badly needed improvements as well as, I think, some discrete water improvements too with that to improve water quality of the area. It's not enough to meet all the capital needs of the system, but every dollar counts and we really appreciate it.
So being a, as, as a resident of Gulf Harbors, when we have a water break, which is frequent, they have to pretty much shut the whole community down. And this will help alleviate that, uh, from people not having any water or having to do the boil water, right? That's what I understand, so, um, very grateful. Shall we take a photo?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
You're gonna do a second photo after this one, too.
Is there one more?
Well, I'll just explain the one we just took a picture with. So I know Commissioner Fitzpatrick worked on this one as well. Um, and this one's for two hundred thousand dollars for Ackerman Street for flooding. You know, it was first selected, flooding was the number one issue in the area slowly, you know, with your work primarily, a lot of these issues has been, have been curbed, um, but there's still plenty of work to be done. So happy to get two hundred thousand dollars to help the flooding in that area. So just thank you guys for all that you do and hopefully next session we can do this again.
And last night, last night, we celebrated, uh, with Amber, the check for Betschapal Ministries. What was that? How much? Five million?
Five million.
Five million dollars as going to their new facility in Holiday. So thank you so much.
They work.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say thank you, um, because I had worked for the two hundred thousand dollars for the floodwater mitigation project on Ackerman and Trouble Creek and downtown Newport Richie in my district. So thank you.
Thank you for all your help.
Mike, Commissioner items real quick?
Here we can.
All right, throw those pictures up there, please.
We have a little time. We'll just get that over with.
Um, I, during FAC, I did a tour and I was just so impressed with the Palm Beach Engineering Department. And I just gave, um, the presentation to Mr. Carbala. And, um, one of the things that I really liked was our streetscape division. And, um, I was gonna read it to you, but I don't have time now. But, uh, I think I'll send you the verbiage to everybody. Uh, really incredible streetscape program and a big tree program in Palm Beach County. And I think some of the commissioners who were driving around there, uh, well, Commissioner Fitzpatrick and her aide noticed, noticed their medians and how they do their trails, not smooshed up against the road like we do. So, um, really good ideas coming from Palm Beach. They also have the world's largest, um, waste, waste to energy plant and we toured that and I'd love to take our staff down there to look at it and see how they implemented their expansion. Um, these are, uh, some of the landscaping photos that we've been giving to the code enforcement. Um, we do five every Friday. You can see the whole, all the hedges gone. I didn't see what the other ones were.
Go back to the second picture.
There, all the landscape gone. Landscape gone.
Oh, that might have been it.
There, I mean.
Go ahead and next, go forward.
Forward. These are banks.
Just on the edge of that curb.
Yeah, weird, weird, but supposed to have a hedge all the way across. So, um, we sent a second notice in May, so I'm looking forward to finding out what action we're taking. If you're driving down fifty-four, you will notice the Regent's Bank, um, in Mitchell Ranch Plaza, re, redid their hedge and mulch. And it makes a huge difference. So we're slipping backwards when we're not enforcing the landscape ordinance. Um, I do want to say I've asked, I think since spring, for a meeting with the cities on this side, a, a joint meeting with the commission in Port Ritchie, Newport Ritchie. I haven't seen that date yet. Um, Mr. Carbala, I am curious if you could give us, uh, a report sometime on what we do with septic. I think maybe we're not paying enough. Look at that. No trees, no hedge. They took everything out right there on State Road fifty-four. And, um, at Tibarta, we are gonna be working on an interlocal agreement. It turns out we don't have one. Regional Planning Council has one, Tampa Bay Water has one, but T, Tibarta has been acting without any kind of interlocal agreement. And I think this would be really good for Tibarta and we'll also be including the cities in the funding. We have, even though they sit on Tibarta, they haven't been assessed anything. So looking forward to that and that's something that this board will have to approve. Okay, I think that's it.
Your meeting's not gonna start November.
What meeting?
The joint meeting of the cities.
November second?
Yes.
Well, I'll be in Germany. Oh, no, I'm here.
Thank you for working that around my schedule.
Thank you.
I'll see you in a bit.
Uh, must be more?
Oh, thank you, sir. Let me, let me put on the spectacle so I can actually read here. Hold on a sec. All right. Real quick here, um, Commissioners, if I can make, these mics are really low, by the way. If I can turn the volume up. Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion, um, for CARES. Uh, they're having a fundraising event at Sunwest Park on October sixteenth and seventeenth, um, twenty twenty-one. It's a beach charity event and festival. Um, there's gonna be beach chairs painted by local artists. It will be auctioned off along with many other activities. They have this year to year. I've, I've asked for this multiple years. So all I'm asking is a, a motion to waive the park fees amount of one thousand sixty-eight dollars for the CARES event at Sunwest on October sixteenth and seventeen.
Second.
Evan, a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, like sign.
Thank you.
Motion passed four zero.
And I'll probably let, um, Commissioner Mariano talk about the event more because he's a big part of it. So I will save that for you. Okay. Um, and just an update, um, I think everybody's aware that the new contractor for the diverging diamond, um, is in place now. Obviously, we're very happy about that. I'm gonna thank F.D.O.T. Secretary, um, David Gwynn and the Surety Company for working so quickly um, after the other company defaulted, get back out there. I was, I was charmed to see yesterday when I drove by numerous vehicles out there. Right, I'm just talking about this one now, yeah. Um, so happy to that. I know the community's very happy about it. I'm not gonna give a date on when the guesstimate is. It'll be completed, but, um, we're happy it's moving forward again. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Well, I don't have the photos, but I would like to mention a few things. I did go to the Floor Association of Counties meeting last week. It was very informative. And their solid waste department is five times the size of ours. And I would like to go back and take an inside of the facility tour. And I've already spoken with them about that. There are ways to recycle a lot of the dust and I am researching that as well. And while I was there, I was noticing the landscaping and how Commissioner Starkey had mentioned that the sidewalks are pressed back up along the communities, not basically right on the road, which is kind of what we've done here in Moon Lake on the west side of the road. It is more pressed up against. the one I had went to, we were able to help with a lot of the debris and clean up the areas, and I wish I had the photos, but I don't have those photos with me today, but we were able to go and help the disabled and the elderly clean up their homes, and I would very much like to see a lot more, more programs in reference to helping our elderly and disabled as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to address Green Key, just because we had some comments on that today, and also some good news. On September seventeenth, Public Works applied for a Green Key grant under the D E O to rebuild Florida General Infrastructure Program. It's a two-million-dollar grant. I think it's going to help quite a bit. I'm still going to be looking to take my legislative ask to kind of match along with that, so all the way to Green Key Road, which by the way, the seawall out there come out great, I think there's some great improvements for Green Key Beach coming, so I think it's going to help that area. And for the comments, as far as like, we've forgotten them, just remember, we just did a cleanup for them just a little bit ago, too. I want to make sure we address the stormwater issues best we can, because it is a low-lying area right to the Gulf, but along all Green Key and a lot of those roadways coming in, in effect, can you put those pictures up again, Jordan? I had them put up when Mrs. Wood would speak, and just so the board could see them as she was talking, but literally, there's, there's roadway, there's muck in the road, and I think just like we've solved other things, like Leisure Lane many years ago, we used to flood out. If this roadway gets built, if we set the drainage up, if we put the drains in place going right along the ditches, just like we know, like Oak Ridge doesn't flood even though it's in the midst of a major, major floodway, because they maintain them, we've got to get the maintenance of all these areas along these yards to be dug out. You've got to get the road set up so it can pitch to both ways and get the water to flow out. It's so easy to get to the Gulf that once in a storm event happens, once the load, load tide comes, we should be able to clear the road off. On a high-tide storm surge situation, it's going to flood, but we want to prevent, is the other ones. If you see that area right there, that's an area where we put a pump in the backside, not a pump, but a pipe with a flapper valve on it, that was the one area that was dry in that whole area. So I know we can do a lot better there. It's not going to be perfect on a storm surge, it's right on the coast, it's going to happen, but I'm going to tell you, we can make this a lot better, and at the same time, I've always said, when we fix an area with the stormwater drainage, is the time to pave. I'll be looking to come forward with a paving assessment right after that as well. So we can fix this, we do have the things in place. Mike Carbala and his team, and Colleen, thank you, working real close to get it through to, to help make this, these next steps happen.
I remember when we were out there looking, it's got to be six years ago now, or seven years ago, that we were looking at a lot of these flood areas here. The flooding, far as the flooding coming there, it always happens, right?
Right, and it's going to happen.
There's no way to stop it from coming.
It's coming, no question.
It's coming. But these areas you're talking about, like you were saying, to, once, once it goes away, then it kind of clears out, so.
Once low tide can come in, if you have the proper drainage, it'll go out. If you go back to the slide that shows the, the muck in the roadway.
Yeah, I see that one.
Next one, I think, right there. So that, that area right there, that doesn't have to be that way. We can fix that. So you've got a bunch of homes, again, six, seven days of dryness, you've still got that much muck in the road and the water in the road? We can fix that to go away, that as soon as that load time comes in, the water can get out, if you let it go. So I think that, like I said, we can make some major improvements, it's not going to be perfect, but they won't have to go through that, and that's the key.
I got you, yeah.
All right. On another note, there's a project, I'm going to say it was nine years ago, I think Tropical Storm Debbie is when it was, we had a big flood, we had like, just made a motion here to kind of like, declare a state of emergency. I went back, had a truck for my insurance company, and we kind of like, just were loading up sandbags to figure out where we could go try to help somebody. And a deputy come over, and she was taking some sandbags, going to put them in her patrol car. I go, where are you going to go, where are you going to go with that? Because she wanted like, six bags. She goes, I'm going to head over to Holiday Hills over by the Gulfview Mall. I go, you need six bags? I says, I got to think there's a few more you're going to need as well if you're in that, in that area if it's flooded, the way she described it. I go, oh, yeah, we need a bunch more. So we loaded the truck, we put like thirty-two sandbags in, we put them over, this lady was an elderly lady, she had amaz, she couldn't do anything, so we protected her, we used all the other sandbags, we did like, three more loads. Later that day, the governor was actually coming to town that night, we kind of walked that whole area, it's where the Gainesboro pump is. They were pumping water up the hill, down Stone Road, it turned out it was flowing down a nineteen in the corridor, down to a drainage pipe, coming right back into that same area. Then that night, by seven-thirty, after kind of studying the situation, watching the canal, which was now, it's now low tide, I got like, three feet of water, this whole area, that's all in there. If you look up down, behind the Steak and Shake, that whole triangle, Pensiv Lane, Kelso, Hyperion, Gainesboro, all that area is like, under two feet, three feet of water. There's a guy who wants to bring an airboat in there. At the end of the road, there's Embassy, and there's a roadway that's, a canal that's there. It's seven feet below the road, and I got water sitting up here, I got a canal down over there. I said, this shouldn't be happening. We put a pump in that night, about seven-thirty, by the next day, one-thirty in the afternoon, it was dry as a bone. Okay, since then, we put a pipe in, a pump in, the next time it rained, they didn't flood out. We put a hard pipe in the ground, it's been sitting there now for probably six years, seven years. Same time we did Iron Bark and Gray Birch. That thing's been sitting there. It took a long time to go through engineering, finally went through engineering, and now it's been sitting in the county's attorney's office for two hundred and thirty-seven days. And I'm not faulting the county attorney's office, or even staff that make priorities, but, but I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to put this request in, that this is back in the priority list, and I guess what's number fifteen or seventeen?
Fifteen.
And fifteen, okay. And, and, and literally, this is two hundred something homes, suffering, suffering, suffering. We missed a paving assessment opportunity from two years ago that could have been passed, that I didn't want to do until we fixed the drainage, that now, that it's going to cost them more money. I want to move this up to the top of the list and get this project done. It's pipe in the ground, running all the way down to the canal, it's going to take two homes, which we already bought, that we can clear out and increase the size of that pond. I mean, literally, I think with that pond size and that pipe in the ground, gravity fed, not even pumped, even though we'll leave the other pipe in the ground in case we do, we have it for an extreme event, we'll solve this whole situation and really elevate a neighborhood that's been depressed for a long time because of this whole situation. I mean, the roads are terrible, they did a good job with the paver seal that we did, it was like, one of the neighborhoods we did, but it just, it just needs something, and to be right across from the Gulfview Mall, we could do, we could do so much better. So I'm going to ask it to go to the top of the list. Mike, if you want to talk to it, but I really feel that strong, nine years has been long enough, I know it's a situation that, you know, you've got to look at different things, but I'm going to tell you, for my district, to see this thing here, to have it not done at this point, I really want to make a motion to move it to the top of the list. That's my motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
What's, I don't know what list we're talking about here.
So.
We have, we have like fifty lists.
We can have discussion. So we had, we had asked the administrator, County Administrator, to, because in the procurement issue, the board knows, my office is having difficulty with the moving procurement items forward. We had asked each of the branches for their top ten of the, of a priority list of what they wanted us to work on first.
Gotcha.
Public infrastructure has produced a list that has more than ten, but that's fine, and this particular one happens to be number fifteen. I work for the board, if the board wants us to give that more priority, happy to do that, but something else falls off the list.
I might move it up, it's, it's not going to mess up Quail Hollow, though, is it? You know, you don't want to, you don't want to push Quail Hollow back.
I just don't think it's, to me, I'm going to tell you, to do this, and to do this agreement, it shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah.
It's literally a pipe in the ground, it's already been engineered, already put approved, it's just a matter of getting it through to get it to procurement. If we need to go hire some more people to go help Jeff's office go through, let's go do it. But there's no way this project should be sitting, 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 and I, I'm going to say, Mike, in fairness, I understand why it's not the highest priority, because the people with the pumps we have in place, they haven't flooded.
Yeah.
Okay, so I understand why you prioritize it that way.